Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the regular of Sumpah County Council, Tuesday, April 9, 2024. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
Can you turn my girl on, huh?
Can you hear me now?
Very well.
Thank you for your attendance this evening to the regular meeting. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
To the regular meeting of Sumpah County Council for Tuesday, April 9, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please let us stand for the invitation and pleasure of the leaders. Almighty God, you are Creator and our sustainer. You are light and our fortress. You are wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our tasks with wisdom and may we approach our numbers with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day. We ask these things in the powerful name. Amen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brian, who approved the agenda of the new change under ordinance and the other public hearing, ordinance number 24999. We will have second reading, but public hearing did be held at third reading on next week. So there will be no public hearing tonight on ordinance number 24999. In our packets, we have three packets of minutes that we have to approve. Who's approved of amended?
Sir.
It's been moved in a segment that we have approved the amended agenda in a discussion. Turn it on, please. Do you say aye? Aye. As for approval for county council regular meeting minutes for March 12. So then, sir, we move to property section. If that we move that we approve council's regular meeting minutes for March 12, 2024. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Have a motion to approve the minutes for our special meeting for Tuesday. So, second, 26, we have a motion in a second in a discussion. And in all, if they will, please say aye. Aye. And lastly, ask for a motion to approve our meeting minutes from county council regular meeting for Tuesday, March 26. So. Second, second vote. In a discussion, all in favor, please say aye. The land use number, ordinance minute number 2304.
There are no changes to 2304 from second reading.
Move for third reading approval. Sir, we will move property second. Then we have third reading, the ordinance amendment number 2304. Any discussion? And in all, if they will, please say aye. Aye. Third reading is approved.
Thank you.
Order number 24998, run.
This is chairman members of council, we'll have a second reading after public hearing. This is an ordinance to approve the sale of property located 13 South Main Street. That's where Warner Community Action just has its offices. First thing director issued a request for proposals. As long as possible, request for proposals from Woodrake Holding LLC and Thompson Holdings LLC together. Now, the gist of this agreement is found in the contract itself. Purchase price is $107,779, and that price established by the Sumpah County assessor. The seller will own the finance $97,000 to be secured by a good for non-expend note in mortgage burden, described in paragraph 12, $10,779 to pay the closing. In paragraph 12 of the contract, what it says is, this is the loan forgiveness amount. What it says is, if the value of property does not meet or exceed $1 million as determined by a licensed registered real estate appraiser when the certificate of occupancy is issued, then the loan will be forgiven in the same proportion as the appraised value of the property was $1 million. For example, if the $3 million, $97,000 would be forgiven based on plan of action of milestones, I'll get to this in a minute. If it's 900,000, it'd be 90% of $97,000 forgiveness amount. Now, the plan of action of milestones is just like this. The 25% of the loan forgiveness amount will be forgiven if the exterior demolition is completed within six months of the closing. An additional 25% of the loan forgiveness amount will be forgiven if the interior demolition is accomplished within 24 months of the closing. And finally, the last 50% will be forgiven of the loan forgiveness amount will be forgiven if the interior upset and exterior upset is completed and certificate of occupancy issued within 36 months of the closing. Those are primary terms of the agreement. If there are any questions, first public hearing.
Thank you, Brian. Brian, the second reading, we're going to have a public hearing on this ordinance number 24998. Now declare a public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please proceed to the podium. State your name, let it read. Seeing none, you have a motion to approve. So, first. Motion number seven to have some other orders from 24998. All in favor, please say aye. Order number 24999.
Mr. Chairman, members, good evening. Order 24999 is a request from staff to amend the county operation budget for 23, 24 to allow the purchase of a bulldozer for Sumpah County landfill. Purchase price is $466,500. Again, that would be taken from the solid waste disposal front.
Move for both? Second. We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance from 24999. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The bulldozer that we're purchasing, does that use for any road or repair?
No, sir, this is a heavy piece of equipment that's used to compact and push solid waste at landfill.
Any further discussion? In all, if they will, please say aye. Aye. All votes. Second reading, ordinance 24999 is bad. New business. Proles changed to county road policy presented by Mr. Washington. Before I give you the floor, Mr. Washington, are you planning to ask council to take any action this evening?
I may.
We have rules.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started, I want to thank all these citizens for coming out tonight to express themselves as residents of Sumpah County about the conditions of the road. It's important for you to be heard. It's important for you to be here. I want to thank you for doing so. Just to recap our last meeting, so everyone is up to date. We talked about the county's opinion related to work on private roads last week. And we talked about the county attorney's opinion back in 1990. And what we concluded, or at least what I concluded from reading it, is that there was a provision for us to address this issue from a public safety and public health perspective. Council has informed me in the past that there was a state attorney general's opinion that prevented us from addressing this issue. And, you know, it's been said in the past that if you want to hide something from someone, write it down. And so, I requested the attorney general's opinion, and I have reviewed it. And I'm going to go through the high points with you because I think what it demonstrates is that there is a pathway for us to help our citizens. And the pathway is decided based on two criteria. One is declare a public purpose. That's the first criteria, i.e. public health, public safety. The second criteria is that there is a irrevocable deed by the landowners to turn the road over to the county. Those are the two criterias. And once those two criterias are met, then the county can provide those basic services for its citizens. So, let's go at it. Mr. Neese, would you put up the first opinion, which would be the Lee County opinion? And I'm going to walk. You drew it. This is an opinion that Lee County sought after the disaster to use public funds to address roads after the disaster took place. And if you go down under law analysis, you'll see where it says, "The due process clause of the Constitution, federal and state, requires that public funds must be expended for a public purpose." Remember, we talked about that being one of the criteria. It's in that paragraph under law analysis toward the end of the paragraph. If you will, go to the next screen, Mr. Neese. Then they go on to establish what's necessary as a public purpose. Trying to make sure we're matched up, Mr. Neese, so folks can see it. It starts with, as a general rule, a public purpose. Okay. If we look at the top, it says, as a general, and of course, this is the attorney general's opinion. This is not my opinion. This is not the county's attorney's opinion. This is the attorney general's opinion. What it says is, as a general rule, a public purpose has for its objective the promotion of the public health, the promotion of public safety, the promotion of morals, the promotion of general welfare, the promotion of security, the promotion of prosperity and contentment for all the inhabitants or residents, or at least a substantial part thereof. It does not, it repeat, it does not have to benefit all of the people in order to serve a public purpose. View scroll to the next screen, and it gets an example of that on the attorney general's opinion, January 9, 1976, which says, "When moving dead animals from private property is a proper public purpose for the health and safety of the community and is thus permissible under the state constitution." And that's in that paragraph that you're seeing now. Now, this was the Lee County opinion. But what's even more impactful and more revealing is the attorney general's opinion related to Richland County. Mr. Neese, can we go through that opinion? And while she's going through that opinion, these are the opinions that were given to me, our staff. And these opinions were used as the reason that we cannot address this issue. Okay, we have it up now. This is an opinion concerning whether public funds may be constitutionally expended by Richland County Council for the maintenance of private roads or driveways. This opinion also addresses whether an enclosed ordinance is constitutional. June 4, 1990. If you go to number two, it says, "Our Supreme Court has concluded that the determination of what constitutes a public purpose is a decision for the legislative branch, in this instance, Richland County Council." So in our instance, it would be Sumpah County Council, the folks sitting up here today. Let's go to the next screen, please, Mr. Neese. Under number seven, it reads, "Our research indicates that there is authority in other jurisdictions which concludes that public safety alone represents a legitimate public purpose and that where an ordinance designed to promote public safety provides for the maintenance of private roads or streets, such is valid." It goes on to say, "Therefore, it could be argued that because Richland County in this ordinance requires that scraping be done on roadways for emergency vehicle passage, such a finding is sufficient to meet the public purpose in that it promotes public safety." Those on the side, "These cases in other jurisdictions suggest that in the enactment of an ordinance such as here, there must not only be a determination of a need to promote public safety, but that there also must be irrevocable dedication of the private property to the public before an ordinance meets the public purpose test." Meaning, if you have a road where you can't do egress or ingress, right? And you decide that the county has to come in to give you some relief, then you have to sign that road over to the county, and it's irrevocable. As I mentioned earlier, the second piece is the public purpose piece. Again, this is the attorney general's opinion, not my opinion. Mr. Neese, let's go to the let's go to the last, the last page. The conclusion. And here's what it reads. "Here, Richland County in its ordinance requires both a determination of necessity for emergency vehicle passage as well as a public dedication before a road may be scraped, because both requirements are contained." Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Neese, I'm ahead of you. Fair last round. It starts with, "Here, Richland County." You got it, that's it. Okay. So, it's it, thank you, councilman, from that was up. "Here, Richland County in its ordinance requires both a determination of necessity for emergency vehicle passage as well as a public dedication before a road may be scraped. Because both requirements are contained in the ordinance, a court would probably conclude that Richland County's determination of public purpose is constitutionally valid on its face. Moreover, based on Judge McCollin's ruling, if Richland County in its acceptance of a particular roadway concludes that the public benefit in that instance is substantial, then the proposed ordinance would also be constitutional as applied in a given situation." Ladies and gentlemen, we have just laid out to you the criteria to establish Sumpah County's authority to address the situation that we find ourselves in. Last week, you saw the pictures, we saw craters in roads that were three feet deep. We got folks who have dementia, who have health issues, who are old in age, and if something happens, they cannot be rescued. We've had people testify to that. I believe that government was established to provide basic services to our citizens. We do a lot of other things. We spend money on a lot of other things. It is incumbent upon us to spend money to address the citizenry's basic services. And being able to get in and out on your road is a basic service, and we must commit and submit to that. So, it's been established by the attorney general that this can be done. I want to do a couple of things now. I want, and Mr. Chairman, if you're opposed to this, I'll put it in a motion form, and we can vote it up or down. But I would like for us to instruct our county administrator to come back to us with a plan that addresses dealing with roads that have these kinds of issues with a cost analysis as well. And then, secondly, I also have an ordinance that is drawn to meet the attorney general's opinion, and I want to submit the ordinance as well. Mr. Chairman, I'll yield for now to get your ruling on our instructions to the county administrator.
Before that, can we have a discussion about some things?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the Lee County?
We can't hear.
Can you go back to the Lee County?
Yes, sir.
Go all the way to the end. It says, "In conclusion, the fact that Lee County was declared a major disaster area under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act does not grant Lee County the power to use public funds and equipment to perform work on private property to repair driveway damage as a result of the flood. Please be aware that this is only an opinion." So, in the conclusion, it says that the county can do it.
Mr. Chairman, let me remind you that we're talking about disaster relief, which is a federal issue, and it spoke to the federal issue, which has nothing to do with the state.
But you didn't just follow.
No, no, it was sent to me by staff. I didn't bring it forward. It was sent to me.
But you
And I'm speaking on it. And even in this one, it says very clearly, "The due process clause of the Constitution, federal and state, requires that public funds must be expended for a public purpose." So the two criteria are establishing it as public purpose and the deed of the property. It's very, very clear, and so is the second opinion. Second opinion is even more clear. If you read the conclusion on that, it says that under the specifics identified, that Richland County can, can produce this ordinance, and it is constitutional and it is legal. And they made it very clear. And so, Mr. Chairman, now that we know that, we have to decide whether or not we're going to be a part of the system or whether or not we're going to be with the people. That's the decision we got to make tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to, so, the way this works is they got to be accepted into the county system before we can. So we would have to accept, and then
Well, first you'd have to declare
If it's a private road, we can't do anything with it. But if it's a, if it's a private road that we've accepted
As a public purpose.
As a public purpose.
Right. And then after that, they have to deed the road to the county, and that's irrevocable.
And that, we went on that road from then on.
Correct.
So we would be, we would be responsible for
Minimal man.
How can we do minimal, like?
Because that's how the ordinance is drawn.
If my road, if there's a county road, don't we assume liability for that road at that point?
That's the rules.
So how about, how about if, like, I live on a private road, and I know it's, when it rains, I mean, it's two days of going around and this and that, and that's just part of living on a private, on, well, it's a driveway.
We're not talking about driveway.
That's, well, let me explain what happened. Because back when Naomi and I think Vivian were a big part of it, we did where homes, there was a driveway going back to a home. And then, the landowner wanted to provide pieces of property for their family. So we said, and they couldn't do it on a private road. So what we did was that, what's called an enclave or something, we passed a ordinance saying, you can put up to five homes, you can cut that property up and put up to five homes on that road. But it was a driveway, and now it turned into a road with six homes on it. You, you, when you put that much traffic on the road, it is going to be tough, and probably the landowner, the first landowner was probably had, especially after country, was some type of farmer, and he took care of the road. And then, when he passed on and people start selling their lots out there, then it quit getting worked on. And just like my road, I knew, I had to run water a half a mile down my road, and I had to run the cable. Are we responsible, if we hit a water line while we're just barely maintaining that road, are we gonna, are we gonna have to move the water lines over? Are you asking us to do that, that, for that road? These are just questions that I've had in my mind concerning this night. And then, you know, I get people, I know this is your district, and you've got a lot of people that come out and support it.
Not only in my district.
Yeah.
It's in a lot of your district.
But I've got people in my district who, who, who also are uncomfortable. You know what they're telling me? They're saying, y'all want me to pass the penny, and then you will turn around and raise my taxes as their private rent.
Let me speak to that. Let me speak to that. So, so, let's be honest, and let's put all the cards on the table. In 1990, Sumpah County pulled the rug from under rural residents when they changed the ordinance about taking roads into the system. Prior to that, they took roads. After 1990, what they said to rule folks is, you got to bring your road up to spec, including ditching, grading, and paving. People prior to that didn't have to do that, but these folks are still paying taxes. They're paying taxes for emergency services that they can't get. They're paying taxes for public safety that they can't get. They're paying taxes to have health products delivered to their home that they cannot get. So if we're going to give them money back, going all the way back to 1990, a good attorney can make a case for that.
Do I get money back from the school district because my kids didn't use it?
Yeah.
Well, they chose to live on the
Yeah, but they're paying taxes.
They're paying taxes too.
They're paying taxes. But you're getting the services that they are not getting. They're not getting the services that you're getting.
I'm not trying to
Where the fuck's Shemika Road?
Shemika.
Or Duffy Drive?
Right here.
Right here.
Can the fire service get to you?
No.
Down the road. They instructs one to even deliver it to them. Mr. Chairman, if the mailman can't even get to
We can't establish
We have established.
That, that is a public problem.
We have established.
I get my mail.